Hey, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, June 13. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if you would please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Few remain standing for invocation from Reverend Rachel Danner.
Precious and loving God, we give you thanks that you called us to be here to care for your people in your world. Lord, we ask that you would guide and direct this time, that we can discern how best to serve you and one another, that we can do our due diligence and use our gifts faithfully. Lord, thank you for the ways that you call us to serve, for the ways that you are with us in all that we do and all that we say. In all these things, we pray in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much. Okay, public comments? Do you have any public comment? I'm not seeing any.
Let's turn right in.
Approval of minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Mr. Comments? Mr. Noel?
I just hope everybody had a chance to drive by the new statue that was dedicated Friday evening. It was great to be part of the ceremony. Thank you, Alan, for all the work that you've done on it. I think it's a great addition to Atchison County, to the courthouse grounds especially. I think it looks wonderful, and I hope the public has a chance to come by and see it if they weren't there. And I thought there was a great crowd and a great evening.
Mr. Noel?
Eric, home of thunder. No, it's all right. It was good. And thank you for being a part of it. And my public apology, Casey, I didn't know she was at the ceremony unless I had her up there. She wasn't supposed to be there. She snuck in off me.
Yeah, scheduling change may have happened.
But no, it's been right back. So I think the size of the statue, the nice thing is we actually corrected a problem too with the damage that was happening to the tree. And got the yard looking better, but it's just nicer. So it was a good crowd. So let's see what the next project is.
Yeah, I was just gonna say thank you so much. I know you put a lot of time and effort and coordination into that. And I thought it was wonderful. Mrs. Haug is so talented and such an asset to the community. And it was neat to learn about all that she's done already prior to a Lincoln even in our community. So thank you for that. I did have a senior village meeting, advisory board meeting last week, and I was in or out and then ended up not feeling well, so I couldn't make it. So I've added Lindsey's coming, and she'll give a board meeting update within the agenda. So that is all I have on that. We're running ahead of schedule, but that's fine because Catherine is here. So I would like to welcome Catherine Sparks, our new Community Corrections Director. She started June 5th, and we are so excited to have you. I know you hit the ground running and have a lot of programming and things you're working on. So welcome. And thanks for joining us, and we're excited to hear what you're up to. So goodness, it's a lot.
Well, I'd love to give you guys an update on juvenile intake. So we are starting that on July 1st. We have it built into our current grant that we should get awarded July 1st to have contract of $24,000 based on the fact that we haven't posted the job and haven't been able to hire, go through the background check, and we have to have 26 hours of training. My team down at Community Corrections is going to go on a rotation for a period of one to two months as we get that hiring process underway. So that's where we are with that. I have four people being trained in it actually today on how to do the juvenile intake. And the additional two of us is going to do July. It should be good to go. Awesome.
Good to hear.
Yes. I also spoke to Marie McNeil about us taking over juvenile intake, and I did want to update you guys. She is going to look at the funding due to Leavenworth previously during our juvenile intake. She believes that some of the funding will have to come to us. I'm not aware of the numbers just yet, but she's going to take a look and give me a call back.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you guys have any other questions for Katie? I know you have a non-elected executive session, if not.
Okay. Yeah, I was curious about that because I know the intake Leavenworth County had been doing it, but it was based on both counties' numbers together. And it seemed like then, all of a sudden, what portion of that was ours? So it sounds like that's being addressed.
Yes, it is. From my understanding, it was decided in the last JCAI was at present at that we would take over the juvenile intake. And I am going to talk more about programming in the executive session, but right now, Leavenworth has built into their prevention grant to pay half of one of our employees' salaries for programming. So basically, we're going to assist them with programming for the Action School District. And then they are going to give us some funding for that, and we are taking over our juvenile intake. So we only have about, I would say the max of 12 over the last year juvenile intakes. The majority of those were for juvenile offenses. We did have some police protective custody and same cases. But we're probably going to average about one intake a month is our estimate right now. We'll see if that increases. Hopefully not. And so we will be the point for the Atchison Community Corrections will still service 409 even though the contract is with.
So that is something I am looking at. I have looked over the contract. I met with Sherre Becker. I talked to Mr. Henderson and Tom Weiser about that contract. I am meeting with the superintendent of the Action School District because I am in the place to start six programs as of August. And I'm hoping if everything goes my way, I will be able to have 10 as of August, but I got to get people in training. And we have the funding for it, but it is a big purchase, so I'll need approval. But I do have those numbers for you guys. My hope is that we can work with the USD 409. There could be three avenues. They could choose to work solely with us, which we should be able to handle. They could still work with Leavenworth and us part-time. And potentially, we could look at their MOU and have it rewrite where it shortened from five years to a shorter amount of time, and then we could take over. Or add a clause in there to add a clause in there that every year they can choose to end the contract. Because right now, they have until June 30th, I believe, to end that contract. So a lot of work in a short amount of time. So I am hoping to be with them. And I would also love to work with the Ethicam School District and Boys and Girls Club, Cornerstone. I've already set up to work with court services, and we'll be doing adult and juvenile.
That's great news about the program because I know in my conversations with Renee, like the programming has been very useful for the students.
Yes, we have one main program called Crossroads. We have some others, but Crossroads really encompasses a lot in your management, cognitive thinking, truancy, shoplifting, things along that nature. So I have some printouts on that for you guys to have more knowledge.
Awesome. Thank you.
Email dates the meeting. So Commissioner on the turmoil lately, a little unclear what a meeting makes.
Yes, I will try and find that out myself. I had a meeting with Jeff Buttrick. He is the Director of Community Services Juvenile to find out what would it mean for a split and what would we have to do. I know that I was able to see a meeting in Leavenworth where they were going to split from us. It was a formal letter. But I had talked to some people. We have not received that. So I'm hoping we'll get some more information. But Jeff did set me up with Marie McNeil so that we can get our steps we would have to do if we do split. But I will definitely let you know.
Appreciate it.
Would the formal letter come to you or to our county clerk? I have absolutely no clue. They just stated in the meeting that I watched to kind of get an idea of what was going on. It was, I think, the May 3rd meeting, a workshop, and they stated that if they were going to continue with us and if they reach out to you guys to have some sort of a meeting, and if they were not, they would send this formal letter. But there was no direct, this is what we're going to do. Gotcha. Okay. And then how long for the executive session? Do I have? Sorry, I might have that. And then who HR Director? Corrections and Commission? And county councilman?
Okay. I'm writing it down, but I'm like, oh, Eric's going to.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recessed to executive session at 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel. It was allowed by KSA 75-4319B1. And the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session at 10:25, 10:26 a.m. And the EOC 10443 US Highway 59, and those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson, County Counselor, and HR Director, and
Sparks.
Community Corrections. And Finance Director. I missed that.
I'll say that.
Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
I do still have the adult budget, but I can come back if I need to on that. I know I think there's a lot.
Yeah.
This is taking approval by that.
Based off of the amount that I'm wanting to spend on both budgets, yes, because I, over $5,000, I would need approval from you guys.
And that needs to be spent before July?
Yes, I have to spend it by June 30th. Otherwise, I have to return those funds. I try to.
We need to extend. Is that what I'm hearing? Sorry.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, the adult one is much shorter than the juvenile.
So we need to extend our executive session.
10 minutes, 10:28.
Come out 10.
To come out?
10:38.
To come out?
Yeah. It's 10:28.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
10 more minutes.
Hey, we are back in open session. I would look for a motion to approve a purchase order in the amount of $58,086 for the juvenile services payroll and programming out of the 2023 Community Corrections Budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Also look for a motion to approve a purchase order in the amount of $61,633.61 for the adult services payroll and programming out of the 2023 Community Corrections Budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Nice to meet you.
You too. Okay, so we're running about 20 minutes ahead of time. Mark, would you want to do the renovation invoices in that spot?
Sure. So there are courthouse renovation invoices for Treasury Office, raisers office, its office, that are all have a purchase order turned in that will be paid out of the reserve funds, which was capital outlay money that was transferred over there.
Okay, look for a motion to approve a purchase order out of the reserve fund in the amount of $603.07 for renovations in the treasurer's office, appraisers, and county attorney's office. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Have a motion to approve a purchase order out of the reserve fund to Regan floor covering for the county attorney renovations in the amount of $1,433.46.
So move.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Looking for a motion to approve a purchase order out of the reserve fund for a many-split air conditioner for the appraisers office in the amount of $8,471.21. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. I have a purchase order to be paid out of the ARPA fund for EMS to emergency services supply for a 2024 Osage-type Warrior ambulance remount in the amount of $106,920. This is a partial payment, and the remainder will come out of the ambulance capital outlay fund. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Yeah, yep. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna Cory had sent his EMS commission report for May of 2023. Did you guys have a chance to review that? If so, for a motion to approve a file? Okay. No, you're fine. You have time. I was just kind of looking at.
Oh.
Yeah, yep.
It's just the colors. 27%. No patient canceled in round falls call. 13% is a lot. I move, receive the file. I'll say that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. I want to talk about this one, Mark's back, but what are your guys' thoughts on the MoCAN membership? Okay. Okay. Because I feel like that's where we were last year, right? So I was trying to remember, we used them for the courthouse grant for the roof. And then, but I think that, like, it was more of a nightmare of paper administrative issues that we had. But that's why I just wanted to visit with you guys about it.
We're better off with Mark than you to sit with them down the road.
Okay. Well, so I was going to get your input on the MoCAN regional.
Yeah, we didn't do it last year.
Yeah.
Either.
Because it was administrative nightmare, right?
Yes, it was. It worked a little difficult to work with. We did get some funding for the portico roofs out of it, but it was a lot of paperwork and all of hoops to jump. Everything's had to be documented just so, so, which is totally fine. But it
But then what they sent us wasn't right. So it's like we were doing it ourselves anyway. We were then just having to explain it back to them. So
Okay.
We've been more than one time.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve purchase order in the amount of $1,912.05 to MoCAN Regional Council for the 2023, 2024 membership or population. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, guys, lack of motion. Jackie will be next. On the juvenile board, what teacher represented USD 409, right? Or was she a community member? I was just curious because was the representative from the school districts on there? Or should there be like 377? I was just curious.
I'm not sure.
If they participate, I mean, we'll have to see if they're interested.
Yeah, no, I was I was not I was just curious because like when Vicki had told me she represented Leavenworth as a citizen, not as a county commissioner. So I was wondering the capacity of Leavenworth.
Maybe figure that out here.
Do you have any updates? Or? What a waste. I know you had filed the tax sale.
Latisha was appointed as the city of Atchison, the city of Atchison.
Gotcha.
So she is not the education representative.
Okay. Do we have one for Atchison County, an education representative?
Those decisions counties appoint them.
That might be helpful.
It's on the letterhead.
How does it show that? Between Latisha and City.
Yeah. Actually, the city, yeah, I thought I was just saying, we put her on there, but that's what I was saying after I Yeah, so there's just your Atchison, Leavenworth Board of County Commissioners, or the city of points, and then the city of Yeah. So two cities, the two counties, two appointments.
Have you appointed anybody?
Yes, me.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but Matt Ramsey was. Tom Weiser.
Well, we could show him.
Oh, that's okay. Yes, because her term expired. Then we solicited. She submitted the only letter that we
It's also judicial appointments, so that's why there are a couple of judges on there.
And I wonder if Matt Ramsey was the education person because he's working for 409 to do the contracts.
He was appointed by us, though.
Okay. By us.
County Commissioners. Yeah, quite a while too. He's still doing something.
Program.
With the program. Managing, or so that's what I understand.
Yeah, that's what they said because he was doing such a good job that he could do it remotely, and it was working well. So they wanted him to continue if he could. Hi, come on in. Sit anywhere you find it there. You just never know where you guys are going to be.
Definitely. Everybody.
Good.
Sit down.
I told her, we didn't plan this, but she wore the blue ones and I wore the red ones.
I had a white hair. She won.
Yeah. Awesome. Well, welcome, Jackie Prejean, Amelia Earhart Foundation for the 2024 appropriation request.
So, yes. So I think I sent you stuff. Yes, we can talk about that. I also brought some vouchers for anybody that didn't have one or and brought a few extras, so I think we'll talk a little bit about the changes and why, and just so everybody's aware of that. We found out after most of the planning had been done for last year that Topeka had moved country stampede to our weekend, which was very frustrating because they were well aware that we were on that weekend at, up until, I think up until COVID, they used the same people in Nashville that we used to book. So they knew. So anyway, So anyway, went ahead, because again, like I said, we were well into everything, knowing that we were gonna have a difficult year with the lake, and we did, and it was not only that, but that was half of, probably more than half the problem, the other half is that during the two years that we did not have the festival because of COVID, prices for our lights and sound well over doubled, they were about two and a half times what they had been before COVID, which makes it absolutely something that we just can't do, we just can't. Because part of the philosophy always was that we wanted everybody that wanted to be there, to try to be there, so we wanted prices to remain. So without ticket prices going sky high, there was just no way that, that we could continue to do the lake. So this year, we have made the decision, we're moving down to the riverfront. I think there are a lot of positives there. I think it's important that everything except the couple of things we do at Benedictine now will be downtown. And I think that's really important, I think it'll be good for everybody downtown, I think it'll be good for all of our businesses, we hope, that's what we want it to be. With the way businesses are down there too, with Trotters and the River House and Mueller's, and then by next year, you know, the Brute Hall will be there. So this year, we'll have one, one beer booth, we want those businesses to do well, even though that's one of the ways we make money. We're gonna go to one beer booth and, and then MGP will have a booth that MGP sponsors every year as well. And we reduce ticket prices. And then kind of the funny, haha, part of that is that this year, we are not on the same weekend as Stampede, because of the calendar. This is one of those years, we are the third full weekend of July, and so this year, the first is on a Saturday. So a lot of events, when they say third weekend, they just, they'll, so they'll be the weekend before us, which is still not helpful to us. Because when people have done the three day thing like that, chances they're gonna do something else the next weekend or, or pre-stump. So, but early ticket sales actually have been fairly decent compared to what they usually are.
Six envelope.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do tons of stuff early, just because we're an outdoor concert and outdoor shows, people tend, unless they're huge names, people tend to wait and see kind of what the weather's gonna do and, and all that. So that's one big change. The other thing we've changed is breakfast with the books that we've had, I think ever since the festival started. But attendance has kind of dwindled and we've kind of decided, maybe that's because it's early in the morning. So we will still do the symposium, we will still do the luncheon up at BC like we always have. But we did have an afternoon event last year at the cultural center, and it was very well attended. So we're gonna, instead of breakfast with the books, we're gonna do afternoon tea with the authors and have it downtown in the afternoon, and cultural center and the art association are fantastic to work with and, and excited about what we're gonna do. So I think that will be well, well received too, and attendance will be better.
Because it's right downtown, like where all the craft booths are gonna be, the car show, so it's all entwined right together.
Yeah, again, it's everything downtown, which I think is wonderful. So very excited about our pioneering achievement award winner this year, Dr. Kathy Sullivan was the first woman to walk in space, and she was the first woman and only eighth person to go to the bottom of the ocean, she's been 30,000 feet under the ocean, so crazy lady. Crazy lady, but she's extremely well educated and headed up NOAA for a while. So she, I think will be really exciting and have Senator Moran and James Kelly as chief of staff again to, to thank for helping us get directly in touch with her. Without going through a speakers bureau. So we're excited to have her here for Saturday. She's also written a children's book and, and been a book about the Hubble telescope that she also worked on. So we're hoping that she'll come down and sign books after the luncheon, and she'll be down there as well, so. Otherwise, we're kind of status quo, and that car show came back last year, it was a big success, they're gonna do it again this year. I think that's always an added attraction and gets different, another group of, you know, another group of people that have a different interest a little bit to come. And, and then the other thing is with the addition of the museum, we think that will, will help attendance as well. Just a couple minutes about that, we have been busy since the minute we opened. And our head, we had over 20 school groups in May, which we didn't think would happen, because teachers always say it's hard to plan field trips, and it's hard to get in work, we had over 20 groups, we are getting area, not just 409, but we are getting area summer school groups. We had Leavenworth last week, we have Nittany Cannon, we have Donovan, so we're getting summer school kids as well, which is fabulous and, and a lot of.
Summer schools, field trips.
We have 409, two of us.
We, yeah, we have 409. It's to try to make summer school seem like it's. It's not really school, we're gonna do, and I think, I think most of them, because we have, we've got some scheduling craziness, because I think Friday's field trip day for summer schools, and so they all wanna come on Friday, it's like, we can't have everybody get it one time.
Last Friday.
Yeah, four of us is last Friday, and we're open for regular people. So the other thing we're a part of out there is the Sunflower state program, which if they get on and register for an app, Sunflower, what is it, Summer Sunflower, Sunflower, Sunflower. You can register for the app, and then the state, we let them in for free, the state will reimburse us for those admissions. So it's awesome that we've had lots of families.
For the whole state of Kansas, I mean, they come from.
You apply to be one of the museums, and then you can go to all these museums all over the state for free this summer.
So birthplace, I mean, your name is.
Lots of places, so it's a cool program. So otherwise, I think I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I, I will say I am no longer the cave coordinator of the New York Festival, I'm now the volunteer coordinator of the New York Festival, so that we can bring Mary Jane on and start training her to take over part of it, so that Karen and I are doing all of it. And it's wonderful to have help again. She always, she was always a helper out of the chamber, so it's really nice to have, have her back home and taking on some responsibility. So.
I'm running a lot.
So happy to answer any questions. That I can.
John, certainly.
Yes.
Our work, is there gonna be a different location?
No, it'll stay right where it is. He just, he was here a year ago, every time he has anything around the area, he comes back here, and he's always said that this is one of the favorite things he ever did. And he was here last year, and he said, you know, she's gonna need a little work, and I've got a thing in Texas next summer, and I'll come back. Well, so we ordered, he thought he just had to prop up the back of her, because that backwood was starting to rot, it's been there 10 years. And so we ordered all the wood and everything, and he went out there and he came and said, oh, Jeff, she looks terrible. Well, we still think she looks fine, but he's the artist.
From the highway, she doesn't.
He thinks she looks terrible, and he said, I'll pay you one. So he has another Texas installation, he just sent me yesterday, that they haven't announced the big ceremonial stuff, but it'll be September. No, this fall, September this fall, that he has another installation. And so he said, I'll just come back up, I'll put her on the trailer and I'll come back up this way, so Salinas, California.
When you're saying, no, in Texas, anyway, I'm gonna Kansas.
Yeah, yeah, well, because he stopped here when he was in Illinois, when he's been in Ohio, he does those everywhere. And the nicest part about that is 10 years ago, when he did it, and he gave it to us, and we just paid for him to come and install it. And I asked him how much it would be, and he said $35,000 is what he got to do something of that size. So now we're 10 years later, and he's willing to do another one, and he said, I'll do it just for the cost of my pay, which is probably gonna be about $4,000. It would probably be 45, or I don't know what he's charging for the ones in Texas, but he, it's, the stuff he does is just phenomenal.
But they're bigger in Texas.
Yes, yeah. Everything's bigger.
Always. Sorry. Red swallow.
That's, that's very true, yeah, so we're excited, he's gonna come back and put up a new one, like sometime September, October.
Other questions? I just want to throw out there, if anybody knows any volunteer, wants volunteers, we need them, I just had a meeting with Ryan, and she needs like eight more people to do the tail booth. And I know Rita Hartman is one of some people that take money at entrances, which we're gonna have four, three of them entering entrances, so we need ticket takers, money takers.
Responsible volunteers, in other words.
Yeah, and plus, back down the River Road, inflatables, we have a lot of stuff on the kids to do, we have three inflatables, face painting, Hannah on there, and they need.
Yeah, I will say that, the, and the, the parameters for Friday night, went down and talked to Chuck at Trotters. And so if you look where the, you know, where the pullout is on River Road, where he has those place for park, people to park. So just south of that is a
Fire hydrant.
And I said, that's where we're gonna block River Road. Technically, we won't have anything up that far, but I don't want people to start driving down and have to back out, because I, there's just a lot of people that aren't great backers, including me. And so, so that's where we're gonna block that off, and the reason we're gonna block that off is we wanna go up River Road with inflatables. If you all remember, years ago, we tried to do inflatables out at the lake, and it's just too hot, and there's not a level shady place to put them, so they got too hot. So now we will be able to put them up River Road, it'll be in the shade, kids can do it. I actually talked at River, at Rangery about wanting sponsors for it, so that we didn't have to charge for them, and I have two sponsors that are gonna pay for all those to new sponsors to the festival that will pay for those, so that they'll be free for the kids. So then we just need people to watch and work, obviously. And their parameter, so the gates will actually be, there'll be one up there at the fire hydrant. And this, the city is gonna use that beautiful orange fencing, everybody asks, how are you gonna lock it up? I said, you know that beautiful orange? So that will be up there, and then the other pay to get in gates will be on commercial, where all the vendors always are for Friday and Saturday, they'll be there Friday and Saturday now. And then the other one will be the walkway between Mueller's and MGP building. So the one the farthest south will just be completely blocked off, we'll have a few people that'll be able to park there, but that'll be completely blocked off, and nobody will be allowed to in that way.
Okay, so River Road will be closed?
Yes, I have redone the, I've redone the farmer's letter, River Road will be closed, but Atchison Street will remain open Friday.
Yeah. Okay, so they can come down and, okay.
All of Friday.
Put it low.
Yeah.
Right, well, but that's, that's where my concern was, is that, I mean, how do we close a road or, and have it?
Yeah.
The best, best of both worlds.
Yeah, Atchison Street will stay open Friday, and then Saturday will, will close at four.
Okay.
Like it always has. It's open till four o'clock.
Signage out ahead of time, I know.
We do, we put, we send letters to everybody, and you know what, I might ask you, because I used to, at the chamber, when Peggy was there, yeah, Peggy, she knew all those, and she'd go through and tell me.
Yeah.
And so I might send that li, the list that I have to you. Yeah, if there's any changes that you're aware of, because otherwise, I don't have any way to know if something changes with those people. And we sent them all a letter, and I just was working on that last night to make sure it's correct. And then there's also a red alert, Wes does a red alert for them to remind them, and they put signs up.
Okay. Yeah, because that, just to remind the locals, that would happen to come down that way.
Right, yeah.
And then there's no traffic, it stops at four also, isn't that fine?
Might be a little later than that, because it's for fireworks, and I, it's on the permit.
We also post about wraps, so all the boats have to get off the river.
Yeah, they, well, they actually, they just stay, they just, they have to, if they're on the river, they have to be a certain, certain, that's for fireworks, so that's just Saturday.
I've seen them out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we have people, we used to, I don't know, we still have people that come down from St. Joe. Stay out of the river to watch, so, yeah.
If you wanted to draft an email with your guys' information and all the volunteers that are needed, and if you have to be 21 and plus, I would share it with our county.
That would be wonderful, yeah, that would be great, we'll do that, we'll put that together, that would be very helpful, thank you.
And they're in shifts, they're not there all the time, like the tail booths, it's like from 3:45 to 7:00, and then from 7:00 to 11:00. So, and it goes really fast, yeah. You just wanna put all that in there and just say that they can get back with you guys, and if they wanted to volunteer.
That would be great, thank you, yeah, that would be very helpful. Questions? Full speed ahead. The most hard, everything is in process, so.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. We'll leave a call brocher for people. They get to the court.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, ladies. See you later.
We could do the attorney client.
Okay.
Mark should definitely stay.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, okay.
10 minutes.
Yeah.
You're buying everyone lunch today, we voted.
He was entirely too happy. I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recesses to executive session at 11:10 PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged to the attorney-client relationship as allowed by KSA 75-4319 B2. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion, and that the board come out of executive session at 11:20 AM in the EOC 10443 US Highway 59, and those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson and Mark Selfner.
Kate's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero, we will have a note. Back in open session, taking a good restroom break, or our next agenda item. Back in open session, taking a good restroom break for our next agenda item.
Yeah, they're visiting with Wes first.
I had lunch with Jennifer Maxwell yesterday, um, and she was just inquiring on. Coming to us for the appropriation and like. Asking kind of like what way everybody went, I'm like, I'm not giving advice on that. I just like, come with the needs. Um, because there's a new board this time and like last year they came and asked for funding and then a vehicle. And she was just asking the history of that. And I was like, well, last year we said no to the vehicle because we needed the programming to be. So just to be upfront with you guys, like that's, I just told her, like, I didn't have advice. Um, just come with their requests. So.
Full-time folks on board, they're.
Yeah, I still stand firm though that. The money should go to the programming to keep going versus a vehicle like. There wasn't justification, they were trying to do. Paying the mileage to get a benchmark to know, does it make sense to people or not, not just.
When they had one, they didn't regulate the vehicle. And an agent drove it to death. Just not charged for it. I mean, to me that was, uh. And so, I mean, if it's not gonna be responsibly maintained.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to let you guys know, cause again, I never want to speak on behalf of the commission, but I just kind of gave insight. What we faced last year in the discussion of. This is where we're at, but yeah, it's exciting to see they are providing the programming, like several different. Events for you. How's it going? Alright, so we're a little early, but you're here, so that's awesome. Lindsay Wood, Atchison Senior Village Administrator. Temporary license letter. So I have a letter to present to you guys. In support of uh, meeting a requirement that Lindsay needs to. Become the interim administrator of satisfying requirement. And I drafted the letter last week. I know you guys want approval of everything before I sign it, so. To be one step ahead, I sent my template to the gal at the state to make sure it meets the requirement. So we didn't do today and then realized, oh, Casey should have done something different and have to do next week. So she already responded that it looked great and I told her I would have it signed today, give it to Lindsay to send back, so. It's just formality of.
Getting my temporary license.
Yes.
And just so like you're aware, like I thought it was like a hundred and twenty days that I would have a temporary license. And you can extend it twice, so I will actually have a hundred and eighty days, which will be good, so then I can. Get a survey ready, plus study and then take my test. So at the end of each sixty days, I will have to resubmit, so I'll have to have like the same letter, just a different date, date.
Okay, so moving forward, are you guys okay with using the same letter template and just adjust the date?
Because they said, the lady, this Karen lady, she said, you know, most people, because like say. I felt ready in my second term, if for some reason I would take it and not pass, cause there's two parts of it. Then I would only get to extend or finish out that six, that sixty day extension. So she said, most people do the extension and wait until your last extension, so take it like early on in my last sixty days. So then. I have time to take it, because once, if you fail, you can't do another sixty day extension. Pass the, the sixty days, so.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to allow the chair to sign a letter to Karen Torgor. At the Licensed Administrator for Health Occupations Provincial in Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services as presented.
So move.
Move and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three zero.
Financial update. Okay, so yesterday, we spent three and a half hours on the phone. With our billing company to kind of get everything figured out as far as like. Claims and to try and figure out our cash flow. We went through every single person and the states back some of this charges, I mean, on this report, the aging report that we can run. It goes back, I mean, there were some claims on there that were from like two thousand nineteen that hadn't gotten addressed. And I feel like in that time, she made it very clear that the business officer, office manager that was under a new. Didn't, you know, complete necessary paperwork as far as like levels of care and different things like that to. Uh, you know, to get those claims to push through. Uh, so there are a few things that we're going to have to write off. Um, and I can get a more detailed, we just took up most of the afternoon, but this morning I have things that I need to address. Um, it does seem like most things are billed a month to two months behind. So when we did go through each resident that either has an outstanding bill or a credit. Um, there were lots of things that they had to reprocess and rebuild that apparently were submitted on May thirty-first. So there were only a few things that like Audra would need to submit as far as like levels of care. Um, the other thing that we addressed was taking in, we have new residents that are coming Medicaid pending. Um, we're gonna be more aggressive on their application before just saying, yes, we'll accept you and. Yes, getting around to the Medicaid application, we're going to have them meet with our business office manager. Um, make them bring in all of the documents. Um, so then we can kind of go over the application with them, make sure we have everything that they need in order to submit that. Because there is a, a piece on the application that our facility has to fill out and sign. So we can take copies of everything and already have that, because that's where the ball has kind of gotten dropped on some of these folks is. They said they were gonna be Medicaid pending. We accepted them in the past. My past, I mean, one to two years ago. And then we're taking care of them. But then the family never followed through with getting us bank statements or things like that. And unfortunately Medicaid. Only goes back ninety days. Um, most of the time she said, you can submit to go back further, but most of the time they only pay back ninety days. So it's super important that before we accept them or say, yes, we're gonna take you, that we have that. Because then if, if they request something else, then we need to get that documentation. Cause there's like a timeline to get that in, in order to get their application approved. So we have changed as far as like, if we're looking at someone, like we have a resident right now. Who came to the facility for skill two times. She went home, the family has been emailing us for the past couple of weeks, because even though we told them that her going home was not necessarily a. A good discharge plan that we recommended long-term here, they went home anyways. Uh, and she wants to come back, but she has, she doesn't have the funds to pay privately. And we're kind of questioning the follow-through as far as like the family does. So. We told them, before we would take her into our facility, they have to have a completed Medicaid app and all the requirements. For the Medicaid app to be sent in. So in the future, because we live in Atchison, it's more rural. You know, as people age, I mean, a majority, we have twenty-three residents out of the thirty-eight that we have in our building right now are Medicaid. You know, paying. So that's a majority of our residents are on Medicaid. We just have to really hone in and make sure that their application is filled out and. That we're, you know, getting all the documents, making copies, so we're aware of not just letting the family fill it out on their timeline. Because then it's not getting done and then we're not getting reimbursed, so.
So on that aging report then, anything that was Medicaid that has been collected beyond ninety days old, it's not able to be collected?
Yeah, I, I don't think, not necessarily. I, I think if you're continuing to correspond and update things, request more, that it will come back.
Some of the people here, but like if we get, if we get someone that's new.
Right.
And then say Medicaid reaches out to us and says we need X, Y, and Z, they give you a certain time to get that, you know, like paperwork in. And as I think, as long as you're meeting those extension periods and, and showing documentation, then I think it's fine. There just hasn't been that in the past.
Right. No, I think the new patient pieces is uh, awesome. I was just curious on the collection of the aging report of the struggle, cause what was, what are those dates back to? Some of them?
Some of them are over a year ago.
So that's the oldest, it's just the over. It's not just a new, it's senior village this.
Um, lots of things, they have rebuilt, um, just because like this company was brought in. I think after a new.
Kind of tandem at the same time.
Yeah, um, so previous, I don't know who did the billing prior to that, but they have gone back. And one of the things, I mean, it was a very long and tedious meeting yesterday, but my hopes are, um, is that we do this. Every month and we just schedule a time with Darcy, who is our representative and go through, because I also felt like. You know, when we went line by line, then it also gave her reminders to, oh, I need to follow up on this claim more. You know, pay attention to this outstanding debt. Um, and so I feel like it'll just be beneficial going forward. That me and the business office manager goes, have a monthly meeting to kind of print off our aging report. And go through just to kind of hold them accountable and make sure we're paying attention to what is or is not being done.
So regardless of the aging and all that, was it, was the grand total?
Um.
Print it out, I know it's probably perfectly accurate.
Yeah.
Sixty-five of that was in the last nine days, so.
And I will say that we do have four Medicaid pending now, but they have been Medicaid pending prior to. All the staff that's currently there. So Barbie has gone in. Because everything had expired, she went back in, refiled all that, so the four that we have pending right now. Everything is sent into Medicaid as far as requirements that they need, um, with the different documents. And we're just waiting for them to approve it. So everything is currently up to date.
Seventy-third, thirty-first, or you're serious to that, just.
Well, I mean, like, so everything is billed, seems like a month behind. So like April was just submitted. Like May thirty-first. So it's not like, you know, that on May thirty-first, everything from May is, is submitted. And some of the claims are even out to sixty days, um, depending on the, the payer source. So, um. Mark and I kind of talked yesterday after the meeting and we kind of decided, you know, like. It looks like we have, you know, a cash flow issue. It's just. Most of the claims were kind of just waiting on to get paid, so.
I think as long as the billing is complete. And expenses are minimized to the best of everyone's ability. There can be turnaround.
And so even though today's report shows cash of a negative three hundred and thirty-six thousand two twenty-one seventy-seven. You feel like we're in a fine.
Well, I think it's gonna take also time to turn the ship around, cause I think it's been gone for so long. But, I mean, cause there was that number that was just thrown out left on the table. We can collect what we're supposed to collect, then.
And unfortunately, like, we're all left with dealing with things that were inherited prior to us. But I think that the team that we have right now is wanting to turn it around and putting in the work. And changing processes that have been in place prior to us and changing them. You know, to look out for the facility and obviously the residents. This is my first time doing this position, so obviously I do not want to come in and be unsuccessful. So I promise you that we are working on getting things, you know, turned around and going in the right direction, so. I will say that yesterday, an hour before our. Uh, financial meeting, then Audra gave me her.
Open meeting, that one needs to be an executive.
Sorry. So.
Do you have a, a timeline on turning that collection for per row?
Um, I guess that would have been something that I should have asked her yesterday. I know, like, lots of the stuff when we went through. You know, she said it would be billed and that we would be paid. There were like four things that Audra needed to change in PCC. As far as like the payer source, so I will make sure that that is done. And it's pretty much something along the lines as far as a level of care, which Pat had asked. Is that appropriate for the business office manager to, you know?
I've looked at the forum since then.
Determine, and it's basically, there's only three options and it's based on what type of facility you're at. So there's either independent living, assisted living, or nursing facility. So obviously it's easy to do. Because we're a nursing facility, so there's no question there as far as like what she needs to change. Um, apparently in PCC, Darcy made us also. Aware that we can go in and print the cash receipt journal. And so she just thought this may be beneficial for you guys to look at, and I had Audra print. January through May. And so this kind of just gives like the revenue. Of each month. And obviously with medical, the medical field, things are gonna fluctuate just depending on how many residents you have and things like that. But we haven't, hasn't proven that we've gone off the deep end and not had, you know. You know, one month where it's been completely unsuccessful, so.
So her cash receiving report she has here, do those not reflect here? Okay. Okay.
So I have those, I didn't make four copies, but others are welcome, yeah, keep those if you want.
Yeah, yep, so, um, and then, um, sorry, I couldn't be at the board meeting. I was literally in or out and got. Not feeling well, so I was hoping you could give us an update of how the board is.
Um, we kind of, um, I mean, we discussed, they had asked me to kind of reach out to different facilities. To kind of see where we were at as far as like private pay and semi-private pay. And at the time that we had the meeting, no one had responded back to my email, because Dave had kind of said I needed to. Throw it out there to them, that I was kind of doing like a survey, you know, of all the facilities around to compare. And that if they shared their information with me, I would share our information. Um, so I hadn't gotten any hits by the time that we had our advisory board meeting. But um, we are comparable, actually, we're more expensive than medical arts here in Atchison. So their semi-private rate is a hundred and eighty-two per day and their private rate is one ninety-five. Our private rate is two-ten and our semi-private rate is one ninety-five. They also did, or the only other person that kind of responded was Brian Phylis, but it's also an assisted living. Obviously the care required is less and they were one thirty-four a day for private, so I'll continue to kind of work on this. Um. We talked about, you know, just different things that were, or equipment pieces that were falling to, you know, apart at the facility. So Abby. She um, sent me an option of a place, an A track place that apparently. Places, air conditioning units and heaters, just to kind of get some quotes on. And I did make each of you guys folders of all the quotes of things, so you guys each have. Some of the, um. Some of the things, the only thing that's not included in there, um, as far as like quotes for different things are, is for the windows. Like I said, John reached out to the Black Company. They kind of were. You know, given several quotes in the past and not ever had any of them followed through, so they weren't necessarily. I tried to get, uh, we tried to obtain like two quotes for item that potentially need to be fixed. I am waiting on another quote for the blinds and curtains in the. Gray room, because that has been an item on our resident council that has been there for quite some time and no one has addressed that yet. The sun, just because like if they play a movie or something in there, then it's. I guess it's too much for their eyes or it has, if there's a glare and. The other piece is the nap, uh, Brian with Navrats did get back to me. So the thickest item in there is the quote. I asked him to send me a specific invoice, because he kind of just sent a general number and like the layout. So when he came in, he kind of wanted to make everything cohesive. So instead of everyone having. Different colors, all that sort of stuff. They kind of designed doing everyone's office with around, you know, like this. Desk type, at least the color and stuff like that. Um, he did go ahead and get, uh, look into like seating. Areas for like the fish room and like our library that we have is a hazard in itself. Because there are so many books, we don't have enough bookshelves. So we did kind of look at revamping those areas, because Nancy and I are going to try and get. Atchison Senior Village enrolled in the P program, which is the program through K State. Where they come in, they assess your facility and then based upon, uh. Different things, you can get reimbursement like up to so much per day. Or per each resident, as long as you kind of meet different criteria. So like one of the criteria is kind of making the facility more home-like. And less institutionalized. And so different assessments they do, which we, um, have started investigating into that program. Um, you can just get reimbursed at a higher rate per patient per day. So it's, it's something that the facility has done in the past. But I don't think since two thousand nineteen, that's obviously something that we're gonna want to. Get involved back in.
Do you have these items ranked as a? One being the most crucial.
I have another question about these, just like looking through. Do we have a process at the county of? Like validating like insurance for when we're hiring contractors to work? I'm, I mean, when you have, I don't know, like meaning if we hired someone and something went south in our facility and.
It depends on the RFP. I mean, a lot of that, it would require. If it's somebody that.
Yeah. Okay, that might be something we should think about, how to have a process for our department heads, so that we're, because.
And if anyone needs clarification, if we have one on file, the county clerk's office has all of them in a binder.
Okay. Just, I was just thinking like for some of the work, like if something were to go south, then the contractor doesn't have insurance, we would be. Up a creek. So that might be something we want to make sure we have. A process for department heads to lean on, so that they know, you know, because you're gonna have people under you doing the things and just making sure that. We all have a layer of.
Oh, so one air conditioning unit is for the, like the outside, like a big unit, so the one that costs twenty thousand. And then the other one is at our nurses station. There is a unit that's hung from the wall, but it just blows air. It does not have. I mean, it's just blowing just room temperature air. And they are always hot in there. And so the, the one, the second one is for, uh, just like a wall unit or, you know, for the nurse's station.
Based on their size, I didn't think it was.
Yeah, yeah, so the. Yes, so it is two different ones.
So there's an issue with air conditioning.
Yeah, I mean, apparently a couple Thursdays ago, when I took off to take, or stayed at home to take my state test. Apparently, one of the air conditioners went out and John called Brian Oswald and they have it functioning now. But Brian was like, this is on its last leg, so it's not out yet. So we just went ahead and. We're kind of proactive to see what, what we were looking at.
And we have one senior village reserve fund left, correct?
There's a reserve fund, it's a capital improvement.
Okay, separate from their budget. Okay, and what are the balance? Do you know the balances on this? Yeah, just curious.
That's the three hundred one. We've had it for twenty plus years. It rested and the bottom is not too full out. It's still functioning, but it also is on its last leg. And their capital's separate then?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is.
Okay.
Fund has about ten or thirteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Air conditioners and the hot water are kind of critical needs, so.
One, especially if we have capital.
Yeah, that's one.
I mean, because you're gonna use it or not. I mean, it's for capital improvement, so.
And the other one is seventy-three thousand seven hundred.
So that's good.
But my recommendation to the board is if you cannot get the collections. Collected, as we use that money to also our cash.
Okay, thank you.
At the end of the day, right now, like, we're. Taxes are not levied for senior village.
Right.
About just, oh, yeah, a small, small portion is, but. We can have taxpayers love it, because that's not what we're saying that we're doing.
All right, let's bump this be up to forty minutes. Let's bump the executive session up to forty minutes. Yeah, so non-elected personnel, I'm sorry, does anybody else have anything for Lindsay outside? Okay. Yep, this is free. Yeah, so, uh, non-elected personnel, please, forty minutes, commission, HR, county counselor, finance director. And senior village administrator. Yeah, I just kind of tweaked some timelines so that she cannot have to stick around for another hour and a half.
I'll move to the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at. Seven fifty-two AM to discuss personal matters. Non-elected personnel was allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. The purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of the executive session at. At twelve thirty-two. Twelve thirty-two, uh, PM in the EOC one zero four four three, West side of fifty-nine. And those present will be the three commissioners, HR director, county counselor, uh, senior village admin. And finance.
Okay, it's been moved in a second and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. We will head into executive session.
So we.
We go with a, maybe an update even next week or, you know, things like that. Yeah, I think with that, kind of talk everything out, okay?
Okay, um, Joe signed it, yep.
Thank you.
Roden Bridge Superintendent's purchase order approval for Norfolk contracting.
EO for Norfolk contracting, uh, two hundred forty-five thousand five hundred forty. The original was two hundred thirty-six thousand five eighty-five, but they have used a hundred eighty, layer of feet of extra H file. Talked to the engineer on staff and that's correct, so.
Motion to approve purchase order. In the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and forty dollars to Norfolk contracting for the Roden Bridge Department. As presented by Joe Sinek. And then second in, all those in favor say aye.
Notice to proceed, Harvard Construction, uh, Port Road, Millan Overly Project.
Look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the notice of proceed, notice to proceed, uh, to Harvard Construction for the Morton Road. Second in, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye.
And then I have three copies of the contract with King Construction for the three tent. Ditching stabilization. On page four of four of each one of these. One copy for them, two copies.
That's the same contract.
For a motion to allow the chair to sign the contract between Atchison County, Kansas and Kings Construction. For the grading and ditch stabilization improvements on three hundred and tenth road over Little Delaware.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Morton Road start.
That was on the sign that I, that was at the south end of Morton Road, so it went by. Today and I saw that, so.
That's a great night. I can take two of those.
Okay.
Yes. Questions, so anything? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. I actually wanted to write something down, sorry. Um, let me get my notes, because I was gonna send you guys an email. But I haven't had a chance to do it yet, but I wanted to have this discussion while everybody's here. So there was a gentleman that came to our meeting last week with, um, some concerns in High District. And so I went out and met with that, uh. Landowner and visited with, with them about it. Super great guy, super nice guy. Um. And I, I see we have some. Issues, we should probably talk about how to handle it, okay? Because this was done six to seven years ago, okay? Um, I explained the statute and the question was, when did the statute go into effect? And I didn't have an answer. Okay, so that's what, that's what he thought. Like, he's like, that statute's probably been around forever.
Yeah.
Um, and he explained that he had went through the channels of the county as far as. Talking to the Roden Bridge Superintendent, which is no longer serving, talked to, um, actually one of the workers of Roden Bridge. Who said, oh, yes, it'll be fine. And he said, oh, no, I'm not listening to just a staff member. I'm going through the channels. So went to the superintendent, which got told to get with the NRCS office, got all this information. Was told by commissioner, as long as you're following the channels laid out for you within NRCS. Again, the contacted NRCS is no longer there. So you have like four people in this equation that are no longer part of it. He went through the proper channels, got permission, put to that, like, money of his own.
The landowner saying I could have permission to put this in.
No, that's incorrect.
So, and I explained.
Incorrect, because I know that, um, should be commissioner that talked to, or he called me. And wondered why he could not, wasn't allowed to do it. And I went through and told him the different things that. And I said, first of all, I can't, I, I had the conversation that I can't give you permission, because I am one commissioner. I says, I don't have the authority. So he, he didn't have that for me. And then he would, he asked a lot of questions. And now it's almost like, well, because I had gave him scenarios of things, why they shouldn't be, they can't get on to the county right away. He's using that, was like, oh, well, that's criteria for me to meet, if I just get that checked off, that it's okay for me to do it. And it was, I was explaining why he couldn't get on the county right away.
Okay, so again, like, I'm just asking how we handle situations like this, because. None of the people that he worked with are there. And I explained to him, when you get anything, like I, we all document everything. Because you don't, I mean, otherwise it's he said, she said, you know. And I know there's other situations in the county where previous commissions, other than us three, have told people stuff and it hasn't happened. And, you know, they still bring that up, but it's like, if it's not in writing, you can't. Uh, but anyways, the point of it is. He spent the money to do it right, to keep his property.
Again, that's, that's, I'm sorry, I gotta, it's not do it right, because he knew explicitly before, he did not have the. The permission to get on to county right away, that that was impermissible. That was, I told him. So, I mean, I, I, I think it's, you know, by.
Part of my right would be having an engineering study and hydrology study. I know that wasn't the case.
He didn't appear before the commission. The commission didn't approve it. The, there was never any. I don't know of any other circumstance where it was actually hooked on to the county tube and extended the tube without permission.
There are a few throughout the county where it's been done.
So, and that was another thing he said when farmers asked like, how'd you do that? And he was like, well, I went to NRCS, sized the pipe, like, did it all. And then they said that they've called in, were told they can't do it. So like, this is where the problem stems. I asked, how do we get a solution to, to get it, you know, disconnected, even if you had, you know. And I got a response of reimbursing for the rate, for the amount that he put in. Because he was given permission from the superintendent of the Roden Bridge. And again, I, I, I'm. I just want to ask this, because it's a scenario, like, it's a scenario. The previous Roden Bridge Superintendent, apparently.
I don't think, I don't think that, no, I don't think that was even, I think I was being contacted, because he couldn't get any. Uh, uh, permission from anyone. And kept asking why. And it was a lengthy conversation, which I remember quite well. And I says, it, because you just, you don't have the right to. Come on to the county right away and specifically, uh, hook on to our culverts. Uh, I, I have to reject the argument, just wholeheartedly, that what, I mean.
Well, but, so let's just play devil's advocate.
Does he have any signatures?
You're the current Road of Richer. Do you have constituents asking you questions of, can I do this? Can I not do this? And you're answering them.
So.
So that's why I'm saying, like, if he's saying this about the previous Road of Richer. I'm just trying to find a solution.
So, so the only thing I've done similar to this is we have Sharp Bank. Put in a fence that came to me. Of the outside, the outflowing of the tube, if they put in the tube, it's on the ours. It's in writing, they're taking responsibility for it. If our tubes ever plug and we tear up, they're out, they have to fix theirs. So it was kind of a safety issue, uh, but it's all in writing. Right or wrong, that's how I did. You know, this is, it's all a safety issue, let's put their fence in and gain some ground. And I know that there's places where we are. Hooked in. It's been that way for twenty-five or thirty years. So I don't know anything about that. I'm familiar with this. So I don't know anything about that, I'm familiar with this, because I got involved since I started, started with this. And I was, some of the understanding with Eric said, I don't know what the superintendent at that time said, but that's the understanding I have. What's the right answer, I don't answer, because I mean, if I go in there and I put a bigger tube in, then his stuff isn't gonna, isn't gonna fit, if it backs water up on the neighbor, is that right? You know, I, you know, so.
I know part of the question we had back when we first talked about it was whether it was causing damage or harm to other. If that's on, it does. Sounds like the answer is yes. Is it causing damage to, or inconvenience or whatever to.
So if this water's standing on the neighbor's property to drain off, is that what?
The gentleman you were saying last week said, he said that it was causing erosion on his side, and I didn't exactly follow whether it was backing up, or whether it was backing up into the risers, or, because. I didn't ask for the issue.
I didn't either, and I wasn't in town Saturday, because I was gonna drive, like, in a pouring rain, if we go out and see what's happening.
If we have something backing up on a farmer, we had it last week in the Delaware River, and this field was draining fast, now that's killing the crop. So we went down there Thursday and we cleaned it, and we called him and he came and looked and, and made sure he was satisfied with what we had done. I couldn't go there, because I had some other obligation I had, and so he ran down there and everything was good, and we tried to get it off of him, so that they don't have that problem. But this is, is a unique situation.
Yeah.
I do have another farmer wanting to do something similar with his tile. I don't know, you know, I told him that we're gonna put the, we have to come in with the tube and go up with the riser. And I said, we'll pour concrete around the top of it, so you can drain over the top of it, but he wants to hook right into that, so, you know.
It's a bad precedent.
Yeah, and I don't, you know. I can only, I can only tell them, but what they do when I leave, how do you? How do you solve that issue?
Well, and a question for you, for you too, because he was explaining that when talking to NRCS, and what are culverts do when they're in a situation where they're dumping out at someone's field? It's a, it's eroding the field and all the things, that everybody should be tying it to where it's all under and drops in the waterway. And then he goes down and cleans up the rock out of the wa- waterway or whatever. I don't know one way or another if that's, you know, without experts saying that, so I'm just asking you, because, I mean, you understand. The, the challenges of.
Most of them are probably put in there with bitches, and they just dumped in the bitches. And now everybody's doing their conservation work, and they're trying to come up with a way to gain every, every acre of ground they can, solve their erosion, so.
That's, yeah. That's exactly, I mean, what it is.
I mean, we've. We've had the problem with the, the bubble up, such as they call them, which is the tile terraces, they, the, and they are putting them, just, they're not hooked on to our culverts, but they're too close to our culverts. So now you have this, this bubble up with all this water, but it's also, that itself is impeding flow from either down the roadsides, or it's trash hanging up on it, brush. It, it's causing a problem, and that, they're not designed that way. The NRCS is not designing that, that way, but when they are applying them, it's like, I can get that off my property and I can get that bubble up off here, then I won't. That, I'm saying, the farmer won't mow into it, or hook on to it, or it won't be on my property, I don't have to farm around it. So conveniently, when no one else is around, it gets put in that way, and then they daring us to tear them out.
Well, and then I think when we talked to NRCS, when they came to the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, because they designed it. But they don't have the staffing to go around and inspect everything when it's done, so at the end of what they're doing. Did they get changed a little bit from what they designed? Am I, is that kind of?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and it's just getting pushed on.
They don't, they don't have the help to run around and check.
I think they went a step further and said that we never design things to drain into your ditches that. I mean, they were saying, the specific question was about somebody replaced the riser in the right way, because they were disclaiming any knowledge of that, that we never do anything that's off of the owner's property.
That's, that's correct, I remember that.
That was more than ten.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up, so we can have a conversation sometime about. How to.
How to address it, how to address it in the future with everyone else.
Well, and because.
Whatever we do, we need to be consistent with everyone.
And well, and that's the thing, like, just sitting here and my brain picking out of this conversation is, this person isn't the only one. So if we're gonna do one, we need to do all to be consistent, but also what is the point when the, the example of not tying on, but dropping a bubble up there is causing our prob- us problems? So it's like, what is the right answer, you know what I mean? I think it's gonna, we need to look into it a little bit further and have those discussions, and so, I just, I wanted to follow up, because I did follow up, so I just wanted us to be able to. Know that, so. Anything else, Joe? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff Lori, purchase order approval for CAD RMS and JMS system.
The software upgrade for CAD RMS, JMS, and. Software that they provide, tools. The. Main thing is waiting on the city to decide what, what they're gonna do. Whether they wanna continue with what they have, or if they wanna join, which is included in, in the agreement. As a, as a big back option, where they get all the same, same services and software. As far as the CAD go, or the RMS system goes, and administration pro, field ops. And the digital evidence management. With that, everything basically just, it's just a big back, but they're on their own. It's all separate. No access control issues, everything's. On a trail. Anybody accessing shows some of the access that. As far as their stuff, there's nothing that option, so, which is explaining, it's been explained to them, I presented to the city last week, and, and they're trying to sort of, it sounds like. The. Biggest thing is with, if we can get this approved. You know, sign the contract by the end of the month, there's significant savings. The, they're offered a $1,000,000 savings, so. The. Therefore, the city's portion of that is, it's around $15,000 difference, if they choose not to. However, we'll have to build an interface with CAD dispatch to their RMS, which they, they say it's not a big deal, not that much money, they're just removing. We would just have to submit a change order after, execute the contract now, that. For the change order, just remove their part of it, and then add the interface, which is less than what the cost to have the police department on there, so. So. With that. If we sign the contract now, we can, we can do a change order later. So, and I'll explain that to the city, so they, they understand that, that it's not a time crush necessarily today for them, so. The. Software itself is. Huge leap in technology from what we're currently using. In fact, it'll eliminate a lot of spreadsheet use, as far as with the administration pro. It offers a ton of custom forms and. But also inventory, fleet management. All manual database. Inventory request, purchase requests, also, it'll eliminate some other software that we use for our K nine tracking and training, that we have to maintain. The vehicle. Vehicle management, where you enter all the equipment that's issued to all the vehicles, it's all, everything's linked together in a master, where. A lot of, lot of. Nice things with the administration pro.
Oh, this is courthouse. Oh, so. Sorry, yeah.
Just get started here.
Sorry. No, you're fine, I walked over. I shouldn't have touched.
Oh, yes.
Well, I just, I just, it says courthouse. Got my stuff in, it's okay. I just, did you change your? Sorry, I would've.
Online.
Oh, it's okay, we made it. Apologies for my tardiness. Noted.
You have to just quick walk down the hill, right?
I'm less sweaty than I thought. Debbie got some. No, Sheriff Lori was just walking through the benefits of, like, the upgrade of what all it's gonna offer, so. No, you're disrupted. No, you're, you're not disrupting, we literally just started, I was watching the clock, because I told you, I was like, we're not gonna be early, we'll stay on time.
But with, with that, the multiple. The. databases, I think it's not really databases, but the fun, the functions that they have for. Sure, grows, definitely gonna be a time saver. To be able to manage all the inventory fleet, those type of things in one, in one spot, and that's, that's. The biggest thing that all the RMS systems that I've looked at over the years is. Everything's kind of just pieced together, this thing's all one, and it all, gives you everything you need for a, you know, you can like the inventory manager, I've looked into third-party software for the, it was like fifty-eight hundred dollars. Have it, so it eliminates those type of costs. Lot of spreadsheet use. Inventory, who it's issued to, those type of things, personally based, that we currently use with our JL system. Doesn't offer. The abilities that this does, but. Functions are, I guess, there's not enough. CAD system. Is even better, I, I've told a lot about all functions of this, but actually Kim was very impressed by it. Masters name, it's database, table's database is a big, big, it's. Sharing agency schools, all needs and. Are there for. Destroying CAD and accessible by. We were all vehicle, or they, they have to see. Based on that information, that we have locations and some people, and that's. So it gives us the ability to have associates to. Associates with these people. It's very, very robust. Visual exits. Very nice as well, we've been able to make a lot of cam, video. Security camera footage into it as well. Case is complete. There's a function where they, in terms of, I've been accessing the entire case file. Some paper. But. These paper upstairs to, to, so they can just access right there. We currently have a way of sharing our body cam. Share. Store that. Shots. All that's stored in that. Smile. Accessible. The JL side of it, it's, we thought the current software we reached, that was a big step. Time saving functions is. That somebody on a traffic stop. Jail, jail can actually choose the case, the incident number from dispatch to. More, if it's more arrest or whatever. They are required to, to book them, they can just import it, all the charges automatically. Or if the charges are. Personal information. So it's definitely time saver. Keeps all the pages, that's. Running to a. Do look at name issue a lot, junior, or second. Type things, so. Those names databases will be, basically five dispatch. Even if, we haven't booked in jail, or a different. Say a junior, or a second, given. Some application. Let's know that. Issue, purchase names. That's the same with, you know, sort of, change, sort of, CAD. A lot of times. Vehicle registrations, maybe a little different than the Congress license, as far as. Now, right now, we can do. Possibilities. This interfaces with the, the fire departments. My first. All times, currently dispatch copies, paste those bad information. To agencies. The interface. All times, rather than personal. Definitely time saver. Information. Currently is, it makes it difficult to compare, it's already from the PDF. Just the way it shows. Most difficult, this would be for.
So I had a question, so you, so the one contract and this approval. Encompasses all agencies of Axerson County, they're all included in this purchase order?
Yes.
Okay. The, that's how my understanding of it was, so I just wanna make sure that. You know, if, when we approve this, everybody's included, and then that just then time that they want to not, they have that option, and understand how to pull out.
Yes. Yeah, I see that, yeah.
Sorry.
Currently. Right now, the only users. Looking at that software with CAD. Dispatch. Also, all the third-party softwares that we use now. Say. Express. Empty clothes. So everything, it's basically what's top job. Stuff's part of it, third-party interfaces. It's all built into the system. It's all built into the system.
Which is the incorporation when we signed Corey's deal last week with the same company, their interface?
Um, that's a building software that I don't think necessarily has anything to do with the. And that type of stuff, but the.
So by putting this software in, how many other softwares are you eliminating? It's up to your cost every, every year.
So. It would eliminate our jail software. That we currently have, it's just. Those are the ones that, like I said, the paging software we use, it'll be similar. Basically the same, same type of notifications. It offers the. Crime mapping. Basically map all. Certainly, I'll show you all your full spots, so if you have. All the reporting to KBI and. K dot, all that. Integrated, including all those. Currently, our, our software does. Validate our entries, so when we submit it to the KBI for an arrest report, it'll kick it back and tells if we have like a tow lead issue. Now, verify, this one will verify before we send it, so there actually is, while your interview tells you this is, there's an error. So once you save it, it's safe, it's a.
How old is the current software?
We've been using this since nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, that's when they signed all of them. It's, the current software is a Lotus, that's. Back in nineteen eighty-three, I think. It's a. It's pretty, it's very user friendly, but it's, just, just does not have the capabilities of.
Glad you said that, that triggered another question, as far as training on the new software, what does that look like? When we move forward, does the company offer training to each agency? How will you handle as far as training goes and?
Go. What, what they've recommended, they'll, they'll set up multiple trains and they understand, you know, as far as our size goes where. We can't just have all of our dispatchers in one, or, or all of our deputies in one, so there'll be multiple trains and. Well, they'll have all that set up. Once the project gets going forward, they appoint them. Their project manager, and then we have to appoint our project. So each, each agency will have that. So it's cost, or else go through to this price.
All the costs are training, everything's in process.
So the city's actually great deal with the police as well, they'll cover that too.
Oh yeah, all, all the training, all the. For, for all agencies are in there. Everything's included.
And then I know time is of essence for the savings, but then what does the timeline look like for implementation? Is it like a drop dead date of turning off Lotus and turning this on, or is it a transition phase, or how can you talk us through a little bit?
So they, they have a. This includes hardware as well, so they, they have their own servers that they. They utilize and then there's a training server, which is a. Serve as a backup server as well, but it. So during the, the setup process, they set it up all on the training. Server, that way everything else is still live and then while they're building interfaces. When they're doing the data conversion. They'll. They'll work on that's on the other side to get all the data converted and then they'll do updates so often with, with our current provider to. Make sure we get all the information. Why, basically, then if you go to turn, turn the switch off, so it'll be a. It, it's not a. Some that's. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was curious.
It'll take some time for data conversion, that there, there'll be, there would be a lot of. Work that goes into that. I don't. One of the things that we started doing quite a while back, we're saving a lot of our photos and videos outside of our software, the file shares, that way. There won't be the issues of importing that into the software. Which does cause a lot, lot of problems with data conversion, but we dealt with the jail, we changed all of that, having gunshots. It's a different process, this way. We just access our file shares. Separately, so it's. That'll be a time consuming. Process for good to get a thing to match. What's the annual cost going forward for software?
Annual cost, it's our current.
Current cost right now, annually, the. Two thousand approximately. There are additional. You know, faces that we pay for. We space for, for like the accident forty. It's clearly twenty. It's not a lot, but. Cost of this should be seventy. Seventy-nine thousand. So it's not quite double. Possible, but.
The same annual cost.
Yeah, not quite, I can spend a little more, a little more.
Okay. It's called doing communications to be this good example, a lot more, a lot better communication, or seamless, it sounds like.
Yeah, having it all on spot. Is there enough funds in eight ninety-seven?
So there's eight hundred and one thousand dollars currently. But I believe you allocated seven hundred and ninety-two thousand for this solid waste of story. So that's nine thousand dollars. Supposed to.
There was also third, or almost thirty thousand for the tire code. Oh, that was solid waste.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was solid waste, I'm sorry.
I have another question, sorry. Okay, so one contract through Ashes County encompassing all agencies as far as. We approved this, everybody's a go. Does this company provide, like what is the customer service aspect look like as far as? With, with all of these folks, if there's an issue, who do they call, is it a representative from Central Square? That will be dedicated to Ashes County agencies, or how does that work?
Yes, well.
Like if I'm a rural fire chief and I'm like, oh gosh, what do I do, who do I call?
So they would.
And we did disappear the tire cutter from eight ninety-seven issue.
Human probably the first place to check.
So every agency will have like that point of contact, Kim would be number one and then Central Square number two.
Well, I mean.
Depending on. Okay. I was just making sure that everyone's like. Not asked above you, if there's like a question or like there's a resource with it that's that. A help.
Had an issue, they would have a direct.
Okay. So everything that I've heard. I think we're making leaps and bounds here and it sounds good. I appreciate you coming, you had.
But I, I just thought one of the five comments briefly, but considering this is a flat situation, joint communications. City of Ashes just was notified through me, through the sheriff, late afternoon, less than a week. So for any organization to change software, whether that's utility billing, CAD, records management, or financial. Typically are not doing that in a twenty-three day period. I had to reach out independently to the gentleman with Central Square. He's trying to find a time for demonstration. But. Diligence to make sure that we are understanding. Of how it impacts our operations, do we want to make the move? If we don't, what does that mean for us in June of a budget year? So. I don't know completely where we are right now because I'm still making contacts, our last scheduled city commission meeting is Monday. And according to Rich with Central Square, there is actually an agreement that the city of Ashes and you need to enter into. So that timeline for us is really unreasonable. I'm here to encourage the sheriff that is now in charge of joint communications and news of commission. To please consider and move forward with developing joint communications committee. The sheriff and the dispatch director, I learned yesterday, have been attending trainings and learning sessions. My access to the information was through a power link.
I provided you this information the same way I got my information. To reach out to get it to administration.
Last Wednesday. And I, I did reach out to him, I talked to my chiefs on Thursday, they were unaware, I reached out to Rich on Friday and I made contact with him yesterday.
Well, it currently doesn't affect your fire chief because he doesn't use the system.
I know, I spoke. Yeah. But I did check with both of them because it was a offer and I wanted to understand what his.
So absolute.
Interest was, but this is a, a big decision for our agency to make, it will be a big decision for your agency to make. I don't appreciate the time we've afforded to. Ask all the questions, have a demonstration, we just purchased a brand new server. Based on the joint communications, the former joint communications board decision, we just went through a conversion, we just ran a parallel requirement. So there's a lot of financial decisions that have to be made, if we just buy a new server to house our email, is that financially responsible? I don't, we were not pursuing or interested in a change to our RMS system right now, that's not to say, I think the system works really good. I've looked back the information that's been provided, but the joint communications decision, sheriff and commission, I would ask that you treat it as such. And generally that would mean any agency that would be impacted. Would at least have input or an opportunity to get the same information that everyone else had, we did not have that. So I'm on a tight timeline, I think this is a little bit disappointing, I was just here two weeks ago. To express my concerns about this very type of thing, and I felt like it was important to come back and just express those concerns to you. I asked last time, Commissioner Arribas, I think you indicated the sheriff was working on the committee, and our chiefs have not been contacted, so. I certainly hope before any other decisions are considered that impact joint communications users. That all agencies are at least afforded the opportunity to be involved. I don't know where we are right now, I have commissioner meetings this week, I'm going to try to bring this up. I have a copy of the Ashes County agreement plus the agreement that we would be asked to sign, we have some decisions to make before we prepare to do that. If we don't do it on Monday, it's gonna have to be a special meeting and perhaps tagged off the budget meeting. Like last month, so I don't know a timeline to provide you, but I just felt it was important to say, this is an example of the concerns that I expressed to you two weeks ago.
I appreciate that, and I think this is why these conversations and this kind of communication often is important, because here's my thing. From my perspective of, we have a purchase order encompassing all agencies in Ashes County to upgrade from nineteen ninety software to today. And the financial responsibilities all taken care of for everyone, we've encompassed everyone, and our joint communications director was. Learning about, which blew my mind when you said that your chief didn't know about it because she's been sitting in training that, and she communicated with all of them. But again. We can't be hindered by. And don't take this wrong, but like, w- we're thinking of everyone in our decision, but we can't wait. To see what you guys want to do in order to better ourselves, like, and I don't mean, I don't mean that in any negative way, I just, it's, it's an. We're a web that's intertwined and it's tough because it's like, how do we move ourselves forward without? You know, and especially this month for the hundred thousand dollar savings, that's a no brainer, like we have to do something to secure that.
But I agree, that's your decision, yeah, part of this is our decision, absolutely, and we will not afford it an opportunity, we've not seen a demo, I learned more today. Then I have known about it, I've known about this less than one week. And we have, I have a governing board that I report to also, and I doubt you would want your, your department heads coming to you. Let's sign this agreement and figure out the details later, that's not me meeting the expectations of my job requirements, and I'm not going to do that.
Absolutely.
So my only request was that. The commitment to creating a joint communications committee was a serious commitment and that we actually see movement and we're not in this place again. Where a joint communication decision is made for us and at us, not with us. Even if we don't agree and we choose not to participate, we should be afforded the same amount of time to make the decision that the agency's under your direction.
When I first started pursuing this, I didn't realize that it allowed agencies to piggyback. Off the, off the software, that was presented once I, once I already got to the demo and everything. So it was something that I had learned, and it was never. My intent at the time, I was looking for the sheriff's office, I wasn't looking for anybody else. Everything like you mentioned, everything was already separated and everybody was using their own thing. We'd already, like I mentioned already, that. We moved to a different JL software, we actually explored that RMS system and all their capabilities at the time. Their, their pricing. Is nowhere near what this price is and for all the benefits that you get and. When I learned that. They allow agencies to piggyback off of it that are in the same county that, I mean, I offered it to. I understand that the timing wasn't. Significant for today's, I mean, but today's means to get approval for the funding for this and. Gives you some more time to. Explore the, the dev and all, all to look at. See if it's something you guys would be interested in. I mentioned that in my last email, if you got it yet or not, that the. The contract can, can be. Play, so there's, there is time for that, the agreement that. That we shared with you that the city has assigned is only for data, data sharing, which is similar to what we already have with our. Current. Access with the cost state one share. This is. A little more robust than that, but it allows us to share. Information about people that are in our system and if somebody, if someone straight up person say that this person's arrested or whatever. That, that's the. On the agreement on the city side that they, they want to sign.
Be signing any agreements unless we're sure we're. But the first email you sent me, that's pretty significant financial implications, now you, I got an update as of yesterday, but initially. Participate for free or this is on you, this is on you, you may not get this, as of yesterday, that information is changing.
Right, because I was, I had asked Rich about that information, wasn't sure if the system.
It's difficult to. It's difficult to make decisions in our agency when the information isn't fully metted for us yet. So as of yesterday, I have new information. Very much changes the way you're looking at situations. I'm asking you as the person in control now. Hopefully with the commission's work and cooperation to include us in things that impact our operations. And this very much. Really all I was here for today. We're doing our best to get a demo set up. I don't know what the timing's going to look like as we get up to, and our commission deadline is tomorrow noon, probably Thursday. He can't even consider a demonstration until Thursday and my day is pretty booked, so we're running into some scheduling challenges. I doubt anyone in this room would appreciate that timeline to make a significant decision.
So Jack, if you've got an indication, like what the city says, we want to do that, but not till October, we're gonna have an extra lie, is a problem. You would probably look at some issues as far as the training and. Oh, that comes to data conversion. When would they start this whole process? I don't know. I'm sure it's gonna be quickly. I mean, I can't imagine.
One of the things we're looking at to understand is. An interface from the new system into our interval to get CAD information. But again, that, that takes time. I'm not, I don't know that stuff. We have to engage our own IT professionals. All I'm asking for is in the future, we're not still talking about this type of timeline. And then a committee that's been committed to initially, the sheriff, and that you all seem to support. I would like to see that support come to fruition. And actually forming a committee where each agency has.
Well, the, the main users of this system is dispatch. So the others benefit from it, whether. Integrating all those agencies getting to discuss. Those three entities. Really, in my mind, necessary. First, providing a benefit to them. So that's why I would move that's. Discussion.
Well, perhaps all three agencies should have been.
I, I've been pursuing this for a year, so it's not anything.
Very new for me.
Piggyback option. Something that was told us after.
Might be on the timeframe of that. That's much sooner than four thirty on Wednesday. So you, you have an opportunity to include us, one of the agencies that will bring new platforms in features to the machine.
And I have a presentation to try to help you better understand, so that you're probably not familiar with the city software. I try to detail that as well as possible, so you can have a better understanding.
I would like our chiefs to have an opportunity inside of this, that decision would impact their operations, to be afforded the same level of understanding.
And I think that's important. I love, I love this communication and conversation that rewound two months ago and we were still with a joint communications director. So I wish she was on because I would ask her because I, she usually does a great job communicating across all agencies, so I'm not sure how. Because she was attending the demos two months ago. So that's why I'm like, how did they not know when you said that?
I didn't. Yeah. But we knew as of Wednesday, that's. If it's been something looking at for months and months. That was known for a couple of months that we could participate. Wednesday, June the seventh, at four thirty PM. Seems a bit too required and not a professional courtesy that I would extend to someone else if I was asking them to make a major operational decision.
And we are encompassing all of the city fees because she had mentioned that'll all be in this.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yesterday, I think it was communicated that even if we chose to stay with what we have, the CAD integration. Came in at a much lower cost than initially communicated to me that would also be encompassed as part of the implementation of those.
Okay.
So that was helpful, but again, we, I remember that yesterday.
Yep, no, I.
Things are changing rapidly. And I need something solid to make a decision on. And I think we hopefully have that. Now we are working on that. All of that aside, my request is when a decision is going to impact our operations. That we'd be afforded the same courtesy and opportunity that the other agencies have.
I think we all need to do better and I, I appreciate you coming and saying that because. I'm trying to look at it from the outside of the county's going to do this and. The city, if they decide not to, we're still going to do this, but.
Yeah.
But so, so just understanding that we need to do better communicating, period. That's it. Communication.
I think that's what I, if I have to boil it down, I think communicating at appropriate times.
And I think we're getting to the place where we're doing that better. I mean, I.
I feel like generally speaking, in this particular instance, I think it failed. So I wanted to make that known and. Moving forward, I hope we're not continuing to discuss these kinds of things. We have some decisions to make, some understanding. Asked the chief to reach out to our providers to make sure that they understand what we're being asked to make a decision on. They're working on that. It is also budget. One of our staff members is on maternity leave and timing of this is two months ago would have been a lot easier to.
And I just want you to know that I feel like I should own the failure here because Sheriff Florrie has been, came into this dynamic of change on the county level. But this was happening prior to him even being with joint communication. So I knew Kim was doing the demos and shame on me, I guess, for not saying something because.
Commit to do better.
Yeah.
If it's something that impacts someone else, someone ought to think that perhaps those someone else's might want to be involved and learn at the same level that the rest of them.
I appreciate that. And I, I need to do better.
I appreciate the opportunity to join in this and we're still, again, sorting that out with no information as of yesterday. I'm not sure how that's going to look depending on what has to go before our governing body and timing. I know that contract is due on the thirtieth. So we're doing our very best to work within those confines and I will communicate back to the sheriff. But I will continue to communicate to each of you when I think.
Yes.
That the spirit of joint communication is joint. And a joint decision typically means those that would be impacted. Even if it's in a positive way, positive change still means decisions and understanding. And I have a responsibility to protect the integrity of our service and our level of operations. And I would like to have an opportunity to do that as well.
Can I ask you a question about your organizational makeup? Because like for us, this decision, we lean on our department head, which is Kim. And then Sheriff Florrie is obviously part of this. And so they went out, they've done their research and then they come back with the recommendation. On yours, so if, if it's PD, SO and joint communication sitting at the table, would that be you or would that be your chief? Because I, your organization.
Really make the recommendation of what they think would be best for their operations, then. I would become involved. And then depending on at what level, financially, usually contracts, then it may roll up to city commission. Depending on what has to be approved. But yes, generally our agencies or our departments are each involved if there's a change considered. If it's a change that has to happen for whatever reason, they would be involved from day one on how that impacts their areas. So we'd rely really heavily on them.
Like we do. Yeah, yeah, perfect. Okay. I was just, since we don't have an administrator, just wondering if it's the same.
Because I don't know, I wouldn't be able to pick from a, from a slew of software companies, what would serve our agency best. And I don't want that responsibility. I have heard.
Right. I agree. That's where I'm at.
But I would rely really heavily on them. And sometimes it's a matter of how new is your staff? How much time do you have for training? How many people do you have out? All of those things matter. They matter to me right now. They mattered to me as of yesterday in the seven. So we all agree those are important factors. Can we please agree they're important for all of us impacted? And I'm asking, as I did two weeks ago, that joint decisions are considered the joint input. And I feel like I've taken enough of your.
No, you're good. You're guys are welcome anytime. I appreciate it. I really. I think the more we can communicate and share each other's perspective, we're going to find the common ground of like, oh, you know, we're going to get there. And because we have a lot of history to clean up.
Yeah. I will continue to work and just communicate back as we understand all the implications and whatever decision or path we go with. I'll communicate that back as quickly as possible so that it doesn't. Delay you in getting your contracts. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any other questions?
The. If this passes, I think you said the. Upkeep or the maintenance contract would be double of what you've been paying?
So the maintenance, there is no maintenance. It's, it's just the annual subscription licensing fees, site fees, but.
So that isn't built into your current budget that's submitted?
I'm sorry.
Your, your budget for twenty twenty-four doesn't include that?
I think forty thousand of it is joint communications.
Yeah.
Right? Is there any out of your two budgets that could be removed?
No, it all, it all is.
It's all.
I mean, there's a few small software fee.
But not really.
Okay, I thought it'd affect your, your own budget.
No, I mean, it would, the ultimate. Currently, the current users, most part of Sheriff's Office of Dispatch are annually around forty-two thousand dollars for, for same software. It would go to around seventy-nine, I guess, seventy-nine thousand.
I have a question on clarity on that. So we do this and then the seventy thousand annual, that still encompasses all of these agencies. Okay, I just want to make sure that that annual fee is everybody.
All the interfaces.
So.
For everybody.
Okay.
I shouldn't say interfaces, interfaces for fire and EMS. Software for dispatching.
Then how will that look on our joint communications, sales tax? Is that going to?
I don't.
That. Extra will be coming out of there. We'll have to look at that budget before we know whether we can sustain it.
Put that back into joint communication for extra forty-two.
So this will be for, this cost includes the first year. So and it does, that first year doesn't start until it goes live. So that's when that.
It would be delayed. The first year would be.
First year is included in the contract. So the following year would be the. Next year from, a year from the data start. So.
Yeah.
So probably eighteen months from now before you gotta worry about that. We should have.
But it's something that. Wasn't counted on.
Part of it was. Just the difference.
From nineteen ninety-three.
Right.
Thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Forty thousand.
Yeah. And there are some parts of that could be utilized or. I was gonna say. Okay, so. I would say that. I didn't send. A social chat email. Requesting me with her prior to. Which came here and this was one of the discussions I was gonna have with her. Still, I'm not receiving a response from her, so.
Well, I'm gonna own that. Like, I should have said something. I, I knew that Kim was going through those trainings and I just, I, it's not fair for the sheriff to take the brunt of that because it's me. Like, I, I was at the table. I knew it. Like, I knew they were looking into them. And I just assumed that with Kim there that, that every agency knew about it. So I shouldn't assume because then anyways, you should, it's my fault. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve a purchase order for the CAD RMS JMS license and service agreement? Including. In, in the agreement, CAD dispatch software, RMS software for Ashes County Sheriff and Ashes Police. JMS software for Ashes County Sheriff's Office and the jail. Interface for the rural and city fire, city of Ashes and Fire Department. And interface for our EMS med review and the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, five ninety-five, twenty-six.
Is there any discussion?
I want discussion because first of all, it's out of the ninety-seven fund, but there isn't.
So I just want to bring that up. So there's eight hundred and one thousand and some change in there. So you allocated seven ninety-two, that solid waste facility, which leaves about nine thousand left.
The tire cutter came.
We did the tire cutter, so which is about twenty thousand negative, but I don't know. So May hasn't been posted yet. I don't know how much May is. Or collections. And we're still going to get some in. So I don't know how much that is though. I just want to bring that up. I don't think I would be doing a good job as your finance person not to.
That's where I was going. That's where I was going.
So the contract includes that fifty percent is upon contract execution.
Right. I think thirty percent.
The next payment, thirty percent, maybe go live, twenty percent.
And our commitment on the seven hundred and ninety-two thousand isn't all upfront, correct?
It's not, no, but it's. Work is to be done by the end of this year. So you will pay out.
So we're talking the eight ninety-seven, which was this.
But.
From twenty fourteen held over, but we still have May, June, like the rest of the year to.
Yeah, some will trickle in there and then that will. Prompt the new sales tax, new sales tax money will come in starting.
Next month.
Yeah. That new money will go into nine ninety-seven.
So you feel comfortable with that?
I mean, I guess if. Not all of it has to be paid upfront. I just don't know how much is going to be in there. I mean. Payroll still comes out of there too, out of those two funds and then the treasurer's office moves money from the eight ninety-seven to cover. Payroll in those two funds. I'm. I'm all for like things that make it easier. I just want everyone to know.
Okay, so that, maybe that's something I hadn't, I had assumed that for the, this year. The operation, operating money or the budgeted money out of the eight ninety-seven would have already been sent to. Solid Waste and Joint Communications.
No.
It has. So there's, oh, there's maybe obligations already on.
Only be moved when it's expensed.
Okay, I thought that they.
No, so the money's in the holding account in eight ninety-seven. That's where the money gets put into. Then when any money is expensed out of two oh two and two oh five, the treasurer's office moves the money from. Eight ninety-seven into those two funds based on the allocation.
So we have the rest of the year's obligations to those departments to come out of their eight ninety-seven.
And until that time cuts when it, it doesn't get trickled into eight ninety-seven anymore and it goes into nine ninety-seven. The treasurer's office will take it out of nine ninety-seven. I, I just don't know how much is going to come in. It looks like. Historically, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand comes in every month. To eight ninety-seven. But that's all dependent upon.
Sales. Yeah.
What is the twenty twenty-three capital for joint communications? Because I, I was trying to pull up the budget from twenty twenty-three where we're at because I know we had like.
Yeah, there's new capital sitting there.
Yeah, I mean.
So what are you, you're talking about the capital inside their budget or?
Like where they're at year-to-date with the budget. Like if we need. Because, and also they've been vacant on positions, so like I'm just curious. Be more organized so I can find it quicker.
Bacon on position within overtime and the bump in pay a couple of times. Oh, good. You have it right there. Look at you.
She has, those are already allocated. Otherwise, they wouldn't be. So.
Best future, but we're talking about her.
She got the full handy book out. I thought maybe someone might ask.
You said we're getting a hundred and twenty-five thousand a month, definitely?
You said we're getting a hundred and twenty five thousand a month, so. I mean, we'll be fine.
So there's a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and thirty three thousand for equipment and radios and then forty four thousand for the CIP. Yeah, I'm not for sure.
She, I think I did ask her, I think I forgot to send it to you. But that's the money that she uses for like. Okay.
So I guess if you take May and June collections of two hundred, roughly two hundred thousand. That would be a hundred and eighty thousand left minus the the negative there. Payroll's not two thousand for two months, so. There probably would be some left.
So we'd be good, well, because the hundred thousand dollar savings too, we have to keep in mind. We know it's a need and if the need is to take that savings.
It's just good to talk about it.
Absolutely, yes.
Like a fool if we don't do it and then. But we could have done it and then we just spent a hundred thousand dollars more because we did it after the fact.
So. So the twenty twenty two total sales tax.
Like when you execute a contract, that solicitor solidifies our hundred thousand dollars, like our contract number, right? Yeah, no, I'm glad that you you brought it up for sure. Okay, so the motion, go have a second. Yes, right, we had a motion that discussed, okay, motion, do I have a second? Okay, all second. So it's been moved, seconded, all those a favor, say hi, hi, all those opposed, same sign.
Fine.
Passes to.
Mainly because we spent too much on a on a solid waste and I don't like spending that fund down so. Or that. Decided to go with three quarter cent. Part of it was that we had the the cushion and we knew we were gonna do some. Finishes out their solid waste, but that. Was so out of line to me that I think it's spent that fund now too far. So, I mean, it on the merits, I I think it's, this is a good system, but I just, I'm not comfortable with. How fastly, how past that has been spent out.
We had previously discussed trying to. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
So I checked in to the lake, there are some farmers already cleaning up some of our. Been that way for years by looking at the map, so. They're just two spots that I know that are being. So how do you, you know? But I mean, at at the same time, they're taking care of it.
I actually like the idea of it being hated and taken care of and then less for us to mow, it's cost effective, but I think we're gonna have to. Have some kind of a process, understanding.
Yeah, so like if there's more that can be harvested, then how do we? I'm not trying to make a mountain out of a ball wheel here, but if we go in and tell everybody, hey, you're gonna have to start. I had paid this, they've been doing it for thirty years, you know, it's kind of the same thing like the tubes and, you know, the people who've been doing it for thirty years and they were told it was okay. How do we stop that now?
I agree.
You know, so. Yeah, but I mean.
On their own without.
Right.
They haven't been corrected, that that doesn't mean that they ever had permission.
Right, and that's part of, you know, and how do you correct that when it's been done that long, it's all been set up? So I just wanted to bring that to the attention. Some of it is, I just looked at the maps and I've seen people in there making hay, so.
Would you say totally?
I did, I did. You've gotta go, it goes at chunks when you try to. To do it, but where Horton's Weldhouse is right next to the driveway that's on us, it gets hate. And then on the south side of the dam, there's big kind of a hill there that's all ours that gets hate, it's nice for him also. And the southern stuff is more of the. Trashy grass or you understand.
Expect.
Yeah, so I just wanted you to be aware of that.
And if somebody, you say somebody's taking care of it, they're they're keeping weeds spraying it for weed.
There's no weeds in it, because I've noticed the part where they're hay, the whatever they're doing, it's pretty clean.
Yeah, that broom gets established, so it's pretty.
Yeah, it's good for. So.
They may have even fertilized.
Oh, I'm sure they have, it's it's good, it's good.
Well, I mean, if it's something we wanna do going forward, it seems like. They will let the status quo occur this year.
Like in November, December, we would say, hey, you know, we've got to get, not to say that we would necessarily kick them off, but they would have to maybe compete for.
I don't know, I'm just letting, I'm just letting everybody be aware of what's up there, so when we move forward, we have to have. That's something there, and then. Like on the tube thing, the ones that's been hooked up for over thirty years. How do you, are you gonna tell them, no, they can't anymore, there's no ditch, there's no ditch there anymore, they. Running all the way to the creek, are you gonna make a big ditch all the way through their property or how are we gonna do this?
Well, I think they hooked on with it. Knowing that they didn't have permission, so.
Well, now, I don't know, I mean, I'm not talking about the person we were talking about earlier, I'm talking about, let's say that you've been here. Thirty years ago, it was okay, and you're still hooked up, and the horse is fine, are we gonna cut those people off?
Well, how do we know it was okay for years ago, because they didn't tell them that?
There's no, is there a contract?
I don't know.
There's no.
Maybe documents or.
There, we have very few records of what.
So. I mean, it's a mess.
So in the meantime, until we resolve something, just leave it alone.
Whatever you do, it's gotta look consistent, it won't be because the topography differs, the that hydrology differs, it's all gonna be different, different situations, so. Then you're gonna be able to get the. Policy, it's like what size fits all, because situations are different.
No, and I I agree with that, but I don't, what how is it, how does the statute actually, does it say absolutely no hooking onto the culverts?
They're on a right.
And has to have permission from the board of county commissioners to be working the right way. Basically, anything to disturb the dirt, move, move it around, take any to add to.
But it has, it has to be the commissioners that, okay.
Be the minute somewhere.
So, although what I did, I probably did that wrong, so.
But at least there's proof that there was some kind of an agreement, I mean, I I commend you for wanting to add something to mine. One earlier.
So if if someone's hooked on now and I've got to replace the pipe. And they hook back up, what do I do?
So that it's broke the law.
No, they've been hooked up for thirty years. The pipe won't through the road is rotten. We're gonna put it back through, then they wanna hook back up, have they have they broke the law?
What's the difference, was one week ago or thirty years ago?
Well, but the problem is, there's so many people in these equations and people do give permission, because like, I I can tell you, previous Roden Bridge. Superintendent, I witnessed them giving permission to do things against this, like, I was a witness, so we can't ever know who tells who what.
So let me ask you this, so let me. So if I go to this person. And say, hey, you have a problem, we'll take it to the commission and get it so okay, that it's never caused a problem before and it's working fine. Do I just come to you guys and say, hey, so and so's? Looking back up, we're putting a new road across or two under the road, we've never had a problem before, is it okay and get the permission?
So I don't think that's gonna solve it, though, because here's the thing, what if we all get voted out and you have three new ones that are following the statute?
Have to be okay by the county commissioner.
So.
So if we go further instance. Isn't that following the rules?
Well, yeah, I guess it would be, I. Would hesitate to say that we'd approve something if there's not going to be some hydrology study that's gonna show that. What they're putting in is sufficient to handle the water, uh because if it's not sufficient to handle the water, then we've. Taken on a liability of creating. Fixing a problem that wouldn't have been ours to fix if we. Had just said nothing.
But for the last thirty years, it's worked and we've never had a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I it's definitely going to be a situation by situation basis. Because there are some of those that I I'm aware of and that, but I I can't see the, I can't see them causing problems, but they might.
What's the difference between that and and somebody put in a driveway and put a a tube down and it's not gonna cause any problem, they don't have permission? Just put their own tube in any size, any shape, I mean.
Can can we have an executive session?
Yeah, attorney, client or non.
Hello.
Twenty minutes.
Move the camp board of county commissioners, recess an executive session at one fifty seven. You know, for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, the relationship is allowed by KSA seventy five dash. Four three one nine B two, and that purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion of the board committee. Session. Seventy two seventeen PM in the E O C and those present will be the three commissioners, Joe Snyder, Pat Henderson. I don't know.
Okay.
The, using the debit card or the card, Roden Bridge is kind of a. It has to be received in by was the four. I think through the treasurer's office, so if we do that before four, somebody comes in with a card to pay after four, we've already done it. It creates a big issue. Are you guys against if we just go with what's on the door and what's been before cash or check? We can work around it, it's just like yesterday, we had some stuff going on and she did it early. And then someone else came in and then they growl about the fee, but then they go ahead and do it and we shouldn't have done. And I'm not, I don't have a problem with the treasurer's office, this is just all me. For my department, it would be a lot easier if it was cash or check because of those instances.
Could you do cashier check if it's after four?
What best services citizens?
No, oh no, no.
What best services citizens? It's like historically, do they prefer card?
It would be similar to. The register of deeds not being able to get. Credit card information to the treasurer sometime so that she doesn't take credit cards anymore. Register of deeds, am I correct?
So we either, I mean, do we, do we said it, that we take a card till three o'clock and then somebody comes in at four with the card? And they're mad because they can't.
I would like.
You understand what I'm saying?
I would actually like to have Connie come to a meeting and we can talk through it, so you better understand, because I know these days, especially, I'm guilty is. I rely on a card, like, a card is life, I I don't carry a cash or check.
If we get a hold of them, they're busy, they're short-staffed, they got sick people, I had four out yesterday, two out today. If we can get a hold of them and get the help, we can get that done, and we're gonna work at our office to make that happen. But just sometimes, it's just, uh that's just what I would like to do. And if you think, you say no, that won't figure it out. There's there's gonna be a better way. Well, I I mean, she has, I don't have a problem with calling, it's not a call.
Yeah, but we need to understand the process too.
By four o'clock, and it's supposed to be by four o'clock, that's it. So if you come in at four fifteen and four, we're going home, so they do their cash receipt. Because you have to receive it the day you take it, you can't do it the next day or any of that, that is the process. So if somebody comes in after four, then we have to send them home or.
That doesn't work for me, we have to get Connie.
So she sent out the email this morning, can I just see if she would come next week?
I won't be here next week, so that's fine, but and I'm not having a problem with Connie, I don't want anybody to think that I am. So if somebody comes in after we've already cash received it, then we can't use the car, okay? I don't have a problem with that, but are you gonna put in there after three thirty? Nobody can, or you just say, don't do it.
It's a process in all of the other offices too. We have someone that wants a hunting official license or tags a bow at four fifty five. Cashed out that day, we just do it again.
We, and even if it's a park, I process it because I'm not gonna deny my customer.
Right.
So, but I'm like, I'm not trying to. Thank you.
Just gonna get on. What is that? Tuesday. Twenty. This, okay. Okay, awesome. All right, so county councilor updates.
Well, tax sale was filed on Thursday. This week, we sent up probably eighty copies of the petition we served by the sheriff and probably had about forty, fifty they're going by. Try to get service process on everything. So. Off to a good start.
Approval of expenses. Do we need a vote to approve the? Expenses as presented?
I think the statute of visions that you would approve.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the expenses for June thirteenth as presented?
Some of.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
All right, public comment. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? You guys are pulling at them. Like, that's the slowest motion.
You say it.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. We are adjourned.
Sure.